Braderen? Braderen? Garcia Guillen? Garcia Guillen?
Here.
Mahalik?
Present.
Morales, here. Dean O'Connell?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Present.
And Wanderlet?
Here. I'd like to welcome everybody who joined us this evening, either in person or virtually. At this time, how about our new police chief? Lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Here's a flag of the United States of America to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under the power of liberty and justice.
Thank you. At this time, Ms. Turner, do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Thank you. Moving on, 1.1.1 Business Enterprise Progress Report.
I'd like to introduce Janice Rita, Director of Business and Auxiliary Services. Janice?
Okay, can everyone see the screen?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, good evening, trustees. Tonight, I will provide you with updates on the colleges' compliance with the Business Enterprise Program, or BEP Act, our efforts to increase supplier diversity, and our fiscal year 20 procurable spend with diverse vendors. Just a quick refresher on some key components of the BEP Act. The intent of the Act is to expand procurement opportunities to firms that have been historically underrepresented. The Act requires state agencies and higher ed institutions to set aspirational goals to increase the participation of businesses owned by minorities, females, and persons with disabilities in the contracts these public bodies award. The Act was amended in August of 2015 to include community colleges and to more clearly define what constitutes compliance. BEP certifications take place through the Illinois Department of Central Management Services, or CMS. The Act applies to all state contracts, regardless of the funding source, construction contracts, and professional service contracts such as those listed here. The state set, and ICCB and JJC have adopted these aspirational goals for each vendor classification, minority, female, disability, and each contract category, with an overall goal of 20% for each contract type. JJC is in compliance with the requirements of the Act. The Board adopted the disadvantaged business enterprise policy on October 11th of 2016. In November of 2016, administration created and implemented procedures for increasing supplier diversity. I was appointed as the liaison to the Business Enterprise Council, and we have filed an annual BEP expenditures report with ICCB each year since 2016. ICCB then forwards the reports to CMS. The annual report consists of two parts, a narrative describing our efforts to increase supplier diversity, which I'll share with you tonight, and an Excel worksheet showing actual utilization data. We have worked diligently on several fronts to improve and demonstrate our commitment to increasing supplier diversity. On a procedural front, we have trained our purchasing staff on the BEP requirements. We've added verbiage to all solicitation documents explaining the college's aspirational goals and encouraging the participation or utilization of diverse suppliers. We've added the BEP classification, minority, female, or disabled, to the vendor form that each active vendor must complete, as well as we've added that designation to our ERP system, and that helps us to track these vendors and do more targeted outreach for relevant solicitations. Also on the procedural front, we revised the purchasing page on the JJC website to emphasize the college's commitment to BEP. That page also contains links to resources explaining how businesses can become BEP certified. And we've added a BEP vendor criterion to the matrix we use to evaluate requests for proposals to determine if the prospective vendor is BEP certified or and/or if and how they are committed to helping the college increase our supplier diversity. In the area of community outreach, we have met with, and even during the pandemic, we continue to meet with numerous minority vendors and civic organizations. As an example, as a result of direct outreach during the early stages of the pandemic, we purchased some PPEs, some gloves and sanitizing wipes from a minority female vendor. In 2018, we joined the African American Business Association, which is an arm of the Joliet Chamber of Commerce, and we've attended several of their networking events and dinners. I also was honored to do a presentation on how to do business with JJC at their September 2019 meeting. And then as a follow-up, we prepared a one-page flyer on doing business with JJC, which they distributed to their membership. And we've also met with the Hollywood Casino to discuss how we could participate in their supplier, diversity supplier fair, vendor fair, but that event was put on hold due to COVID. So in order to reach the known universe of Illinois disadvantaged business enterprises, we used the state's database of BEP certified vendors to identify and send electronic notifications to firms that might be interested in bidding on the college's projects. In the last fiscal year, we sent notices to 5,196 BEP certified vendors requesting them to bid on 23 solicitations. Of course, there were some multiple notifications sent, but we did 5,196 notices, and 72 of those vendors responded, and five were awarded contracts. We also notified the Joliet and Aurora Chambers of Commerce of upcoming projects so they can disseminate that information to their members, and we placed ads of our bids and RFPs in the Joliet Herald News, and just recently, we started placing ads in the Chicago Crusader, a minority and woman-owned newspaper. On the supplier outreach front, Roxanne Vanegas, our purchasing manager, and I have participated as exhibitors at multiple diverse supplier symposiums, which are listed here. We also, we're especially proud of something that we did in March of 2019. It was a very successful lunch and learn event that we hosted at JJC to connect diverse suppliers with 11 Illinois community colleges, three Illinois state universities, and trade organizations such as the Chicago Minority Supplier Development Council, Black Contractors United, and the Hispanic American Industry Association. And we had 35 vendors to attend that event. In February of this year, we were an exhibitor at the ISU Diversity and Technology Conference, and we did have plans to co-host with Moraine Valley at the end of March, another lunch and learn supplier diversity event, but again, that one was canceled due to COVID. So I'm happy to report that our efforts have resulted in an increase of $453,666 in procurable spend with diverse vendors. That's from FY '19 to FY '20. In FY '19, our BEP spend was $86,770, and you can see the industries that that represented. And in FY '20, our BEP spend was $540,436, with the majority of that being spent with professional services. So while we're proud of the accomplishments we've made so far, we know there is more work to be done to reach the 20% aspirational goal. So toward that end, in FY '21, we will focus our efforts on the initiatives outlined here. We will continue to work with Moraine Valley to host the annual Illinois Higher Education Supplier Diversity Lunch and Learn. Right now, it's slated for March of 2022. We will continue to meet with other community colleges and state agencies to discuss best practices and learn from them about their success stories in terms of diversity procurement. We'll participate in virtual supplier diversity events, and we'll expand our notification to additional regional chambers of commerce regarding upcoming projects. And we will also be active participants on one of the subcommittees for the college's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan to share and get suggestions for more outreach and support of the DEI and the college's overall strategic plan. So that concludes my... Are there any questions?
Yes, yes. Janice, this is trustee Alicia Morales.
Mm-hmm.
Quick question. So in one of your slides, you mentioned that we file an annual report with ICCB. Is this report accessible online?
It is not accessible online, but I could certainly get you a copy of it.
Would you please? I would appreciate that.
Okay, very good.
Janice, thanks for the report. I have no doubt that we're going to meet our goals with the goal for the BEP. I think we're going to vote on tonight, I think you said, the auto shop and lab flooring is a BEP vendor, which is a great start in the right direction. Thanks, Janice.
Okay, thank you.
I have one other question. Also, you mentioned, we have our JJC purchasing webpage has been revised, and it contains a link. Is that link, if I go into our webpage, I'll be able to see those links that give instructions on how to certify, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I think that was all I had. Thank you. You guys are doing a great job. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Hello? Hello?
Hello.
Hello. This is Pat Murphy.
Oh, he's not up yet.
Not yet, Pat.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Well, let's go. Okay. Thank you, Janice. Any other, no other questions? Moving on, 1.1.2 Fall Census Report.
I'd like to introduce Dean Bob Morris. He's with us tonight virtually. Bob, are you out there?
I am here. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Share my screen. First of all, thank you all very much. It is always a pleasure to get to present to the trustees, especially on the topic that I know is extremely important to everybody, and that is enrollment. So I'm going to get my screen up here. It was up just a minute ago. I promise it was. And now it's gone. Hmm.
There you go.
Can you see it now?
You can see your email. You can't see the presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. So the Fall Census Report for Enrollment.
Bob?
Yes.
We can only see your email. We don't see the presentation.
I apologize for that. Let me try again. What about now?
Stop, stop sharing again and then try to...
Okay. And I tested it in everything, and it all worked just a few minutes ago.
I can vouch for you, Bob. I saw it.
Me too, Bob.
All right, let's stop sharing. Now I'm going to try again. All right, how about now?
There you go.
Yeah.
You see it now.
All right. Thank you, and I apologize for the delay.
Can you put it in presentation mode, though?
I did. Are you seeing it now, the Fall Enrollment slide?
We are, but we're not seeing it in presentation mode.
Wow. Well, I may just have...
I can share from here if you want.
Thank you, Jim. That would be great.
Do you want to stop sharing?
Right. Okay, well, while Jim is putting that up, there we go. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that. Can you go to the second slide, please?
Yep.
Fall enrollment. We've all seen the numbers, and we all know that JJC, along with most other schools, had a significant decrease in enrollment. But what I wanted to do this evening for the Board and for those attending is to sort of paint the picture as to where the college was, the different successes that we did achieve, the challenges that we faced. We'll go through the numbers a little bit, and then I would like to talk a little bit about where we are headed going forward. Now, some of the successes were tremendous, and in 21 years of higher education, I've never seen anything like this in terms of this pandemic environment. So it certainly presented for some challenges. But one of the successes is clearly that the entire campus, not just enrollment management, but enrollment management, student development in general, academics, facilities, IT, they were able to completely transform the college into a virtual campus. And when we had to do that very, very quickly in the spring, there were obviously a lot of challenges. But heading into fall, I felt like that by the time fall enrollment hit, and by the time students were attending classes, I feel like the entire campus did a fantastic job in transforming into that virtual campus that was enabling us to serve students better. One of the other successes that we had was with the dual-credit students, and this was a big question mark going into fall because the high school population was unstable as well. A lot of schools had delays in enrollment. A lot of schools were kind of going back and forth in terms of face-to-face instruction versus virtual instruction, and the fact that dual-credit was only down about 4% compared to last year, I thought, was a really strong indicator that the high schools remain a very, very valuable and strong partner to JJC, and I think that's extremely important. Student financial support. I think more than ever, JJC provided our students with opportunities to achieve their educational goals financially. We all know about the CARES Act, and we know about the government really stepping forward and providing funds. Well, at JJC, we distributed every dollar of CARES Act funds. And just to give you some ideas of what that it meant, in the spring, that's $458,000 we were able to distribute to students. In the summer, $534,000. And in the fall, $1,754,000 was distributed to students through the CARES Act. And those were for students that were Title IV eligible, meaning they were eligible for federal loans, grants, that sort of thing. If you were not Title IV eligible, you were not eligible for the CARES Act funds. So the fact that we were able to give away every dollar that we had available to us, I think, speaks strongly to JJC making the commitment to our students financially. Now, we also had some other things. Specifically, I'd like to mention the Smart Start program, which was created through some ideas and some initiatives and funded by the foundation. We were able to award 200 students a $500 scholarship. These were new students, students brand-new to JJC. And again, that was through the wonderful efforts of our foundation in terms of getting students that support to get started at JJC. So in terms of providing that financial support for students, in addition to the other scholarships that we provide, I thought this fall, more than ever, we were there for our students financially. In terms of virtual recruiting efforts, this was another area where we really had to make a strong impact very, very quickly. So if you went on our website six months ago versus going on our website now, you'd see a complete transformation in terms of what we do offer students virtually. Students can now take virtual tours. They can go through virtual information sessions. We have an entire webpage now dedicated to the JJC student virtual experience that provides those resources, those links, that information that they need to get started virtually. And some of these recruiting efforts are moving forward, and we're doing even more innovative things that I'll talk about towards the end of the presentation. And then one of the things that's near and dear to my heart is we had a virtual graduation ceremony, our first ever. We didn't know exactly what we were getting into there, and one of the things that is prevalent throughout the entire presentation is so many things that we are doing and have done are firsts, things we've never done before because we've never had to. But the virtual graduation ceremony, if you've had a chance to view it, was just a tremendous event that allowed students to celebrate with their families, with their friends, the tremendous accomplishment of graduating. So those were some of the successes. But obviously, Jim, if you could advance to the next slide, please. There were obviously some challenges associated with the fall as well, and some of those challenges were very, very difficult to overcome, and we're still trying to overcome them. First and foremost, the online learning appeal to students. You know, if you think about JJC, if you've ever driven to campus on a Monday morning and you see that packed parking lot, you know that JJC really, really caters to the relationship between the student and the instructor, the student and the support services, that face-to-face environment, that face-to-face appeal. Well, with none of that being available during the pandemic, what we really had to focus on is increasing the online appeal to students, having them understand that this is a viable option for them now, but it was and continues to be a challenge. And then, again, all of my years of higher education, 21 years, when you look about, when you talk about competition, you know, you think of your competition as other community colleges. You think of it as four-year schools. You think of it as trade schools. But for the first time ever, our biggest competition was students who chose to do nothing. They took a gap year, meaning they just stayed at home. The pandemic is a scary thing. I don't need to tell everybody that, but it really caused people to operate in a sense of fear where they just didn't want to do anything. They wanted to wait it out, and that has been and continues to be one of our biggest challenges, not so much that we're losing students to other schools. We're losing students, and we're trying to get them back because they want to do nothing. They want to ride this out and kind of see where they're at. And as a result of the pandemic, there have been so many economic hardships within our demographics. You know, individuals have lost their jobs. Now, normally, and in almost every other case, an economic recession leads to increases in enrollment at the community college level, not this case. And the reason why, well, there are many reasons why, but a lot of it is because of those, not only the economic hardship, but the uncertainty of it all. How long will a pandemic last? When will a vaccine be available? When will I be able to go back to work? Those economic hardships caused a lot of individuals that would normally go to school, now they're staying home to take care of siblings, or staying home to take care of their kids because of those economic hardships. And again, the financial resources are fantastic, but in some cases, it just made it more difficult for some students to make that leap and go back to school. And then lastly, students' need for that personal connection to staff. I talked about that a few minutes ago, where they really miss that going to class and having a conversation face-to-face with their instructor, with their support services, with admissions, with financial aid, that sort of thing. I think that's something that we continue to work through as we try to make the student experience as positive as we possibly can during the pandemic. Jim, can you go through the next slide, please? Thank you. Now, the demographics have been interesting, and I follow these very closely. One of the things that has jumped out to me is our male-to-female ratio has really shifted. You know, right now, we're 59% female compared to 41% male, whereas a year ago, it was 44% to 56%. So our female population continues to grow, and our male population continues to shrink a little bit. In terms of full-time, part-time, right now, we're at 62% part-time, 38% full-time. Last year, again, it was a 67%, 33% split. So we gained a little bit more on the full-time, and I think that just says that those that did choose to come back did take a full-time schedule. And the age demographic, I think, is also interesting in that it's aged just about the same. 23 years of age is pretty much the student that we're getting. And in terms of the breakdown of race and ethnicity, again, it stayed very similar to what we have been. I've been very concerned about all of those populations, but if you look at the breakdown, again, I know we had a decrease in the number of students, but from a race/ethnicity standpoint, it was pretty consistent with where we were last fall. Jim, would you please advance to the next slide, please? And when you look at the enrollment trends, and I know you've had these numbers for quite a while in your board package, so I won't dwell long on these, but one of the things I do mention, yes, we were down in headcount, and yes, we were down in FTEs and credit hours, but I wanted to caution the Board and for those attending this evening to remember that this is a snapshot. This is a snapshot based on the 10th-day reporting, which we are required to do by the state. However, I will say that as the time period has moved on and as we have started our late-start classes, and they're all fully functional now, we have stabilized quite a bit. As of this morning, we're only down about 12% in credit hours and about 12% in headcount as well. So again, not numbers anybody wants to experience, but because of the dual-credit component and a lot of high schools starting very late in the process, that really did impact 10th-day reporting numbers. But right now, again, we're more, I won't say we're where we want to be, but we're certainly in a better position for fall, down about 12% compared to the 20% that we were down there. Jim, could you advance, please? And pretty much the same thing there, it's just another snapshot of where we were this time, again, with the full-time equivalencies. Again, not where we want to be, but with the dual-credit component, again, we have stabilized, and we're down about 12% today. Next slide, please. And this was just a comparison of where we were in fall of 2019, again, for the full-time equivalencies, the credit hours. Next slide, Jim. As you can see from where our students come from, this has also remained pretty much the same. The overwhelming majority of our students are coming from Joliet and Plainfield. The other breakdowns have been pretty much the same from fall. So again, there hasn't been, even with the pandemic, a large shift in where our students are coming from. That's been pretty much the same. And the next slide, please, Jim. And this is what I wanted to talk about for the rest of my time tonight. I want to look ahead a little bit because I want the Board and I want everybody to know sort of what we're doing now as we continue to shift as a college. I feel, and I know that all of student development feels and academics feels, that we are in a much better place to operate than we were six months ago. There are so many things happening now that I feel really good about in terms of how we can make up some of that ground. You know, some of these events that we had every fall, the counselor update, Discover JJC, obviously, we can't do those now face-to-face, but we are dipping our toes in the water and doing these events virtually. The counselor update is scheduled for Monday, and in there, we are inviting our high school counselors to not just hear what's happening at JJC, but we're going to hear from them, what's happening in the high schools, what do we need to know, how can we better support them? So that's happening Monday, the 16th. On Saturday, December 5th, we are having our first-ever virtual Discover JJC. This is, again, a brand-new endeavor, using the technology, inviting students to join us. Academics will be represented. Student development will be represented. All areas of campus will be represented, and students can actually attend various breakout sessions based on their level of interest, just as if they were going table-to-table during the face-to-face version of Discover JJC. And then this is also a brand-new endeavor, Registration Days. In a similar look and feel to Discover, as we get closer to the spring semester, we're going to have Registration Days, where students can log in and be guaranteed to speak to an individual to meet a need that they currently have, whether it be admissions, or financial aid, or records and registration, or disability services, or advising, or placement testing services. All of these areas will be available to students through virtual formats, and we're going to market these as Registration Days so students know that these are days where they can accomplish everything they need to become a JJC student or continue to be a JJC student. And lastly, this is something I'm very excited about. We're doing a series of five-parent videos. These are videos that will target specific information that parents need to know, not so much from a process perspective, but more from a bigger-picture educating parents on the college process. The first one, I recorded this past Monday, and the title of the first presentation, which will debut at Discover, is "The Role of a Parent in Their Student, Their Sons and Daughters' College Education." What they need to know, what questions should they be asking? How can we put their minds at ease? How can we help them? It's exciting. When you think about it, we've not marketed as much to the parents in the past because the parents would come in with their sons and daughters, and we would talk directly to them. Well, now, we're not doing this. We wanted to make sure that we were taking the time and putting the effort into speaking to the parents. We know that they're huge influencers in terms of their sons and daughters' education, and we wanted to make sure we had good information out there for them so that they can help their sons and daughters enroll at JJC. So that's what has happened leading up to fall. That's where the numbers fell during fall, and that's where we are headed for. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Hi, this is trustee Garcia. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Morris, for that wonderful presentation and going over some of the key changes over the last few months. I have a question regarding the virtual recruiting component. All of that looks awesome, the counselor updates, Discover JJC, Registration Day, and parent videos as well. I was just wondering, are you guys going to make that available for our Spanish-speaking family members and parents?
Absolutely, we are. Yeah, that is a...
Meaning, are you going to have interpreters?
We're working with the Office of Disability Services for interpreting, absolutely, but for the... for the Spanish-speaking population, yes, those will, that will be represented at all of the events, every single one. That is a very important population for us. It is a demographic that we need to make sure we are meeting their needs as well, and we plan to do so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to piggyback on that. This is trustee Alicia Morales. On the parent videos, could you also consider maybe partnering with the Office of Multicultural Affairs? I think they have people, staff, that can assist with, with, you know, doing videos in Spanish language.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea, and I thank you for that, and that's certainly something we'll do. Yeah, again, when you're talking specifically to parents, they have different questions than the students, they have different concerns, they have different needs, and what we're really trying to do there is, is speak to them in the language that they understand, so that they can help their sons and daughters, and we will certainly do that in, in all of the different areas, making sure that we are using all the various areas of campus to assist, including the Office of Multicultural Student Affairs. Absolutely. Thank you for that suggestion.
I have one more thing. On the first slide, when you discussed the successes, you mentioned we had funding CARES Act funds. Could you repeat the amount of funds we received for the fall and the summer? I, I did document the fall, I think you said it was $1,754,000, but I missed the first two.
Sure, I'm happy to repeat that. For the spring, we distributed $458,000, and for the summer, we distributed $534,000.
And when you say we distributed this money, how was this, like, how did you, what did we give to students? What did they receive?
There was an application process involved, and we, we had, we marketed it to students, let them know it was available, and they applied, and what they had to do was fill out the application and let us know that they did, in fact, suffer economic hardship because of specifically the coronavirus. And then, there were different dollar amounts that they could select based on the amount of loss that they incurred. That amount was a lower amount in the spring, because what we didn't know, we knew we had one pool of money. What we didn't know is how much we would give away right away. We didn't know the, the level of interest from the students or how many requests we would get. So it was lower to start, and, but they could select the amount that they wanted. And then, in the summer, it was increased some, and then in the fall, it was increased more, because we knew we still had funds available to give to the students, and that's why the fall number was so much more, is we allowed them to request more. And the nice thing was, is if a student requested funds in the spring and were still enrolled in the summer, they were able to apply again for summer and apply again for fall. So we, we didn't turn anybody away that was Title IV eligible. Now, what we had to do in the fall was we had to scale back the dollar amount, so everybody got some. And I don't have that exact breakdown of, of how much we had to scale back, but if the student applied and met the guidelines and was Title IV eligible, they did receive CARES Act funds from JJC until those funds were exhausted.
Thank you. How did they receive these funds? Were they funds, like, where they got credit towards their tuition and fees books, or was this a check? How did they, how, how did they receive this money?
They provided us, if students that had direct deposit set up with us, their money was directly deposited into their account. If they did not, then we sent them a check. We were, we were not, as a college, permitted to utilize those funds directly toward tuition. These were just funds that went to the students that they could use for whatever they chose to use it for.
This is really generous of us. What were those limits that they were able to apply for?
I would have to go back and check, but in the fall, I believe it was up to $1,500. And I, please let me go verify that, and I'll report back with those exact amounts. But it did increase each time, but I believe in the fall, it went up to as much as $1,500 per student, and then we had to kind of scale it back a little bit.
Yeah, if you could give me just a little bit more information on how that happened. And so, did we work through, like, the Financial Aid Office, or which other departments did we work with to make this happen?
There were a lot of departments involved. We actually formed a committee that met weekly to talk about the application process, the distribution process. We created an application through one of our software programs, and, and when those students applied, what we were able to do is create that list of students that applied, submit that list to the Financial Aid Office. The Financial Aid Office then verified that the students were, in fact, eligible to receive those funds. And then, once that application period ended, we worked with the Office of Students Accounts and Payments, and we were able to get those funds very quickly to the students.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hey, Bob, two, two quick compliments and one, one question for you. $2.5 million is amazing that we gave out to students during, with, with our, with our relief program, CARES Act Relief. That's, that's just, that just shows how much JJC cares about their students. And then, we're glad to see that you're adapting in the promoting of JJC online, because that's probably going to be moving, for, for the, for the short term, it's going to be moving more in that direction, obviously. My quick question to you is, what are the biggest obstacles for the students in the classroom, or their concerns that they're, they're facing right now?
From my perspective and from the conversation I've had, I think the biggest obstacles that they're facing, I'll, I'll answer that within two different things, because I think they're both equally important. First, I think there's an, an uncertainty about what exactly online learning means, and we're working very hard to educate students on what it means, because some people think, I'm online every Tuesday and Thursday, just like I would be if I was taking a class face-to-face, only I'm not going to the classroom, where that's not true. Most of the learning is asynchronous, so it's an education process in terms of educating students and, and as far as what does online learning mean to a JJC student? How do they, how do they get acclimated to the online classroom, the technology thing? The other obstacle that I think a lot of students face is they simply don't have the resources to have the high-speed Wi-Fi in their homes, to have the laptops, and, you know, the foundation, again, and some of the other CARES Act buckets of money that we've had, have been wonder about, wonderful about purchasing laptops and helping students get the technology they need, get the, the Wi-Fi hotspots that they need to complete that. But it has been a little bit of a, a challenge for us, because, you know, we don't know our students well enough to know who does need it and who doesn't need it, and unfortunately, sometimes, if you don't have those technologies, you may not ask for them. You may not even think that it's a possibility that the college may have those resources. So I think we're doing a good job in terms of educating our students that these resources and these, these, this technology is available to them. However, I still think that is one of the biggest challenges. I still think a lot of students are intimidated by the concept of online learning, and I think that's one of the biggest challenges we'll face going forward, is, is letting them know that it's not as intimidating as they might think. They'll still have a wonderful experience with their instructor, they'll still learn, but if you're used to going to class Monday, Wednesday, Friday at 2:00, and all of a sudden, that's taken away from you, it takes a little bit of an adjustment for the student to accept the fact that this new style of learning is just as valuable to their educational goals, and that's what we're working to try to achieve.
Thank you, and I, I totally agree with you on that comment, because it's a different style of learning, and I think with the technology that we're offering, I think if you have the video chat, you're more, you're more tied in like that, like we're doing right now, so. So thanks, Bob, appreciate your report.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Robert? Thank you, Robert.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right. Moving on to 1.2, Movement of Silence, for the following individuals. Fannie Mae Baker, grandmother of Tracy Metcalf and student development. And a recent one, Dane Thayer, son of Rick Thayer, nephew of Tom Thayer, grandson, grandson of Ann and Andy Thayer, friends of JJC, and a former student at JJC.
Chairman, I'd like to add one more. Former President Jerry Weber passed away yesterday, and so I'd like to add him to the list.
Thank you very much, everyone. Next item, 1.3, Recognition of Special Guests. Obviously, all our people that are here virtually and in person are special guests. We have one, a retiree that couldn't be with us last time, is Patrick Murphy. Pat, are you around?
Yes, I am, Bob.
We would like to recognize Patrick Murphy for his years of service at JJC. And do we have, did we read the resolution last year?
Last, last, yes.
We, we read a resolution last, at last month's, Patrick. We thank you for your years. How many years were you here?
I had 39 years of service, Bob.
39 years.
I started when I was, I started when I was 20 years old.
Oh, so you're like 25 now?
30.
Okay. Patrick, Patrick was a wonderful, a wonderful employee of JJC. He, I've known him for a long time, he just did an outstanding job, and I, I would like, I would just like to just give him a round of applause for all his- [applause] And thank you very much, Patrick. You did a, you did a heck of a, heck of a good job. I'd like to say something else. But, any comments? Any comments from you, Patrick?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you so much. Joliet Junior College was a very big part of my life in those 39 years. I have to say, you know, made a lot of great friends in all departments, whether it be administration, facility services, teachers, faculty, staff, you know, clerical, everyone, you know? I mean, everybody was fantastic to me, all the way up until the end. Unfortunately, I had some lingering health issues that kind of forced me to retire early. I really didn't want to go, I, I wish I could have stayed a lot longer. But like I said, I was happy to make JJC my career, it was a great place to work. You know, I can't say enough good about it. I wish everybody safe going forward, and all the best to JJC.
Well, thank you very much. I thought I was going to go before you, Pat, but-
I thought you were too, Bob.
It didn't work out too good.
No.
Well, thank you very much.
It's okay. Okay, thank you so much.
And congratulations again on your retirement. Best of luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item, 1.4.1, Faculty Union Report from Dr. Marsink. Do we have something from Dr. Marsink?
I'm not sure if he's on this evening, Dr. Marsink. No, we didn't hear from him, so I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay, that's, um, unless Bob comes in, we'll forego him for right now. 1.4.2, Adjunct Faculty Union Rep, Laurel Disco. I do have a letter that I will read here, from here, from, damn mask, from Laurel. Members of board, as we enter a homestretch of the fall semester, I want to extend my greetings to you and hope that all find you and your family's well. Everyone has been working very hard to make this a successful semester for our students. This has been a challenge for all of us, but everyone has joined together to try to make things work as effectively as possible for all. Students are challenged to learn more independently and to take the initiative to ask for help if they need it. And if anyone tells you that teaching online is easier than teaching in a classroom and/or lab, they are seriously misinformed. Preparing instructional materials for online delivery, learning how to use new technology effectively, encouraging and supporting students virtually instead of in-person, and responding to their questions throughout the day and evening, all require time, energy, and personal and professional commitment. Once again, we are all very concerned about our enrollment next semester. While this clearly affects everyone, adjuncts are disappointingly impacted when classes do not fill and number of, number of sections are reduced. We are encouraging our current students to register for next semester, hopeful that all numbers will go up and more of us will have classes that run in the spring. We appreciate the efforts that are made at all levels to maintain adjuncts' positions wherever possible. I wish everyone a safe, happy, even if, even if it must be socially distanced through virtual or virtual Thanksgiving. Thank you for the opportunity to submit this report, Laurel Disco, adjunct president. Thank you very much, Laurel. Moving on, Minutes of the Regular Monthly Meeting of October 14th. Entertainer motion to accept the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Joan Colerole, please.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
And Wanderlake.
Yes. Next item, Communications. Any further communications, Ms. Turney?
No further communications, Mr. Chairman.
Next item, 1.7, Approval of the Agenda. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Joan Colerole, please.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
And Wanderlake.
Yes. Next item, 1.8.1, Approval of Consent Agenda. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion at this time? If not, Joan Colerole, please.
Washington?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
And Wanderlake.
Moving on to item 4.5, Approval of the Tax Levy. Entertain a motion to suspend the rules temporarily to allow for public comment on tax levy.
Motion, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Joan Colerole, please.
Washington?
Yes.
Wilkinson? Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Dan O'Connell?
Yes.
And Wanderlake.
Item 4.5.2, Public Comments. Do we have any public comments? From anybody who wants to comment on the tax levy? Going once, twice, no public comments.
Mr. Chairman, can you just read off the, I'm going to read off the phone number just to be sure, 224-303-4622, conference ID 740-304-050, and then hashtag or pound, that would be the line to call in for public comment if somebody wanted a public comment for the
Wait a few minutes to see if anybody wants to call in. And these numbers were published on the-
They're published on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, but just, just to draw it to the public's attention, if they do want to call in, now is the time.
This time, I feel nobody's going to call in. So could entertain a motion to return to regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, Joan Colerole, please.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
And Wanderlake.
Yes. Item 4.5.4, Request to Approve the Tax Levy.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a couple- We have a motion and a couple of seconds. Joan, which call her role please.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
No.
Wanderlake?
Yes. Moving on down to. Student, item five Student Development, No Action Required. Item six Do an Old Business. I think we have. Trustee Nancy wants to make a comment on new and old business?
Yes, that's correct Chairman. Okay. Hello everyone again. I hope you guys are doing well. I wanted to bring something in the new business category. As you know, part of our mission is being accessible and accessible institution dedicated to the cultural enrichment and inclusion. I'm bringing some ideas that would help us take a crucial step in making sure that we're following on that mission. Currently, we're working to take necessary steps to focus on our diversity, equity, and inclusion goals, which include hiring and making sure that we're providing training opportunities to improve the diversity of our employees to be more representative of our student body. I look forward to hearing the new near future concrete action steps to make this a reality. In the meantime, I want to bring something up that I have been talking to Dr. Mitchell over the last few weeks to make sure that our college is more accessible to all members of our community. Some of the things, can you guys hear me fine?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Sure. Some of the things that, that I have been talking to Dr. Mitchell over the last few weeks include our, the way that we can communicate to the public and just making sure that the same way that we are providing information using the virtual recruitment in different languages, particularly in Spanish to our families who speak Spanish, but we're also doing that with different, different communications that we have from the college, including board meetings. And that includes having interpreters remotely based on the current circumstances of the pandemic, but having interpreters available in Spanish as well as American Sign Language to make sure that members of our community that do, that speak different languages feel included, unity, and in our board meetings so that we are able to participate. And that also includes making sure that we have that communication available in different mediums. In our, in our social media pages and making sure that we're making that accessible and make, making that as, making it accessible to our community member. I'm bringing this to your attention and consideration by the full board. If you guys have any comments, you guys are welcome to provide them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Garcia for that. This is trustee Morales. I just kind of got used to having these always in English and forgetting the fact that when my parents attended my swearing in, they didn't understand a word that what was being said. But I agree that if people, if we are going to be truly inclusive, seeing that the population of our students is very diverse and including in Will County with the fastest growth rate of the Latino population, we really should consider having the board meetings bilingual so more people will understand. The more they understand and engage, the more participation that we'll also have and, and a feeling of a sense of genuine unity. So thank you for, for bringing that up. I completely had just not thought about that, but thank you.
Yes, and I completely agree with trustee Nancy and trustee Alicia. We will do what we have to do to get this thing done.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll follow up and then let you know, report back.
Good, good. Okay. New business. Thank, thank you. New business, it's in our book, first reading, old business. It's in our book. Eight point one, second reading. It's in our book here, eight point three, four, five, third ratings, eight point six, eight point ten. Moving on to reports from JJC Foundation, either Nancy and or Christie. Any reports Nancy?
Yes, hi again. I do have a report at this time. So our next, and will be next week on Wednesday, November eighteen at seven-thirty AM. Something that I wanted to share from the foundation was that our scholarships applications will be closing for the spring twenty-twenty-one on November thirtieth. So we're going to make sure that we're encouraging all our students and I believe this is something that we're going to be collaborating with, with marketing to make sure that we are communicating that on all our social media platforms to make sure that our students are able to apply before the deadline, before November thirtieth. Also, funds are still available through the foundation's student emergency accounts. So that's something that we're also going to be working on promoting. The foundation year and appeal was released and it went to over twenty-five thousand mailboxes this week. So we're waiting to receive additional donations that are going to be used for our different scholarships. The Tribute to Men of Color appeal also went out a few weeks ago and we're receiving donations to support different programs. And that's all I have at this time. Question?
Thank you. Does Christie have anything to report additionally if she's on?
No, Nancy covered all of it. Trustee Garcia Gillian, sorry.
Thanks Christie.
Good thing.
Next item is ICCTA.
Maureen? Chairman, she asked me to read something for her.
Yeah, she called me too, okay.
Oh, okay. Were you gonna read it or?
No, you do it.
Okay. So trustee Broderick had a family emergency. She had to fly out of town, but she did ask me to read this. Tonight, we just received an update from the twenty-twenty-one Community College National Legislative Summit. Typically, if you recall, trustee, trustee Broderick, myself, Kelly Roderinelli, and the student trustee fly out to Washington DC for the legislative summit. However, due to the increasing numbers in COVID-nineteen and the pandemic, they are changing this to a virtual legislative summit in February. It'll be held Monday, February eighth, Tuesday, February ninth, and a conclusion report on Wednesday, February tenth. Because it is virtual, it'll be opened up and the more people that we have attend virtually, the lower the cost. So I believe Board Secretary Joan Tierney will be reaching out to all trustees, asking if you're interested in participating this year. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Maureen and Judy. Student trustee, Mr. Trustee Wilkinson.
Jim, do you want me to just share my screen with my PowerPoint? Does everybody see it in presentation?
Yep, we're good.
Yes.
All right. So kind of, I mean, there's a lot that's kind of happened since we, we were last here a month ago. Two, two blazers came out. The October one, it talked a lot about mental health, mental awareness, which is kind of what I'm going to focus on a lot in my presentation tonight because it's something that is affecting a lot of the students. And I'm, I'm assuming most of the faculty as well because we're all going through the same thing. And then the November one just came out recently. And it's just a lot of, it talks about a lot of stuff that's going on in the government and different hot topics that are going on. And then there's just a bunch of transfer events that have still been going on. And Mr. Morris kind of already talked about the CARES Act, but then also there is gear funding and the scholarships have been opened up and with the gear funding that is opened up to Title Four or the people that are financially eligible for that. And they've been using that for getting computers, doing data plans for students that are kind of in need of that and using it for like a borrowing system if students only don't actually need it for the whole semester, just need it for a certain amount of time. And then back in October, they had, we had like kind of a rock the vote week to inform kids or students how, like kind of what their vote means to, to the presidential election. So there's a bunch of informational resources and meetings that were going on throughout the week. Actually, it was the week of the board meeting last month. And so there was a lot of that going on. And then kind of club wise, there was, there, everyone's just planning events virtually to get students involved, kind of to relieve the pressure of, I mean, now that we're kind of getting down to close to holidays, close to finals week, homework is packing on, kind of getting students that relief that we all really need. And then our student government has, we're, we're starting kind of a book club. We were planning on starting that when we come back in January. We've picked our book. We want to do, so you want to talk about race? Since that's kind of a very hot topic right now, we want to inform ourselves so that we can inform others and hopefully we can bring people in with using that book. And then also towards the end of October, Dr. Mitchell had another coffee and conversation. And I'll kind of talk about, I'll talk about that more when I get to the student comments and everything. And then also towards the end of the month, of course, there was Halloween, so the Latinos, Latinos Unidos and the OSA staff kind of helped put on a scavenger hunt, pumpkin carving contest and costume contest. And the top right was the costume contest winner. That one will probably keep you up at night. And then the middle one is, is the pumpkin carving. And then in early November, they, we had the first generation college student. It was the fourth annual event. Where they just had a panel of current students, graduates, professional panel, high school students of just people that are just the first generation kind of talking about their life experiences and everything. And then they just kind of had music going on and they did games to, I guess lighten the mood in a sense. And then kind of the hot, the key topic to this presentation is just going to talk about this informational and the support services that the college is allowing and putting out there for all the students. The Student Wellness and Activity Center, we had, there was three representatives this month. Osra talked to the student govern, student government, Heidi talked to the collegiate club council, and then Jessica was at the post-election kind of safe place. And they just talked about all the different resources that the college is giving to the students with like the ten sessions per academic year. And those sessions can come in the form of a group session if your, your preference is kind of just to open up to a group setting rather than an individual, but if you're the kind of opposite, they also offer individual, there's different consultations. And then they, it makes an emphasis on it's a support, not a diagnosis. Otherwise, because then they'll have to kind of put you to divert you to someone that will professionally diagnose, diagnose you if you are going to pursue higher therapy sessions. And then just going to the student comments, going back to like the coffee and conversation, I was relieved but also kind of sad that there weren't a lot of students that came to the coffee and conversation. There is, there was maybe one or two that hopped on, hopped off really quick that, that talked to Dr. Mitchell. And I was glad because to me it kind of speaks that they're getting used to the format. We're getting used to how everything is going in the college right now. But then it also kind of worries me that some people aren't wanting to voice their opinion or to, are just giving up at this point. And that just goes along with the mental health and everything that's going on within, with, within our minds right now, of course. Excuse me. We're, since we're getting closer to finals week, it's, everything's kind of coming down and packing on. So students are just needing that break. And there's just those reoccurring issues with, we're starting to get to a kind of an overload of homework assignments and then just piling on if that professor won't answer their emails. But then back on the positive side with academic affairs with what Dr. Gray has been doing, with, I speak, I can speak firsthand for this, that she is taking these comments from the students and letting it, or sending them back out to the professors because one of my professors actually reached out to our whole class and was addressing some of the comments that have been put forth to him. So I am glad and pleased to see that that is kind of happening. But just the main focus is just kind of the mental health aspect of everything going on. So I mean, I ask especially Dr. Gray, if you're on here right now, or if you're going to watch this later, and just all the trustees and anyone attend or in this meeting or watching it later, just to kind of have mercy and be understanding of kind of the place that all of us, all of the students are. So then we can also be understanding to where, to where you guys are in this kind of sense. Because like President Lincoln said, a house divided cannot stand. If, if we're on our, if the peers, if my peers and I are on our own and then the staff is on its own different level, then this college would not be able to function. And that's just kind of where we are at right now is the, it's just the mental health is a big, big portion of what's going on with us, with all the students right now. And that will conclude my presentation.
Okay, thanks a lot.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So I know you said only a couple of students jumped onto the coffee with the president. What ideas or what recommendations do you think, what can we do to engage students to want to take advantage of a, I mean, it's an honor to be able to sit with your college president and share your ideas or hear what he or she may have to say. And I'm concerned that students, you know, aren't really participating. Do you have any ideas or recommendations how we can get this information out to students to maybe increase participation?
Um, I, so through the student government and just on a student sense, we've been pushing a lot through our clubs and through courses that we, that we come in contact with. And then I know with, through social media, they've been promoting it a lot. I don't really have any recommendations that, that we've, we aren't already doing because at a, at a standpoint, or at a point, or a certain point, it comes to myself and my peers to hop on and get on that call, which it's usually a lot harder to do now that we're virtual. Students don't want to take that, even if it's five minutes to hop on and say, hey, Dr. Mitchell, I have this concern and then hop off, because there's a lot of kids that do that. But it's, at this point, it's, it's been promoted everywhere. I don't know if, if you guys have any recommendations or know of any, we've been, I mean, with my talks with other trustees from across Illinois, we're, we're all in the same boat. We're trying to figure out what the best way to reach students are. But it's, it's gotten to that point that it's, it's come to that, it's, it's hard to get students to join these calls, especially when they're virtual.
Yeah, I get it, but thank you so much.
Thanks a lot for the student trustee report.
Thanks again.
Next is buildings and grounds, Jake and or Dan.
Dan, do you want to take this one? I'll, I'll take.
Well, I wasn't there, so.
Well, tonight, we approved the auto shop, lab, and flooring replacement. As we said before, this went to a BEP certified vendor. Janice is doing great work with that. Bid was for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars basically. We budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for this, so it came underneath budget. Next month in December, they're looking at to do a chiller piping insulation and. Next month in December, they're looking at to do a chiller piping installation and some miscellaneous HVAC projects. There's no budget for the, the full project yet, but they're going to get that to us coming up next month. A couple upcoming, a couple updates on ongoing projects with the Center Center. We're going out, we're going for options for site work to, will be presented to the board in December. The campus police station, they're going, Pat and Rich are going to meet with, or Rick, I'm sorry about that, are going to meet with the new campus police chief and kind of discuss plans with him, get his opinions and his views. The respiratory therapy program has identified the appropriate floor plan for the space, and they're moving into the design and development part of the project. New student bridge has been postponed. Workday, we got that update from Jim at the, at the retreat. And then a couple of small things, Nycor has to do an easement on the property to, to replace a section of piping of Nycor gas that is deteriorating. It's not leaking yet, but they're trying to replace it preemptively, preemptively not cause a disaster to happen. And then finally, the solar field was complete. It's been a while, and the only thing that's accepted, the only thing that's not complete is the fence. And I was told that the fence will be completed in two to three weeks, so we'll be able to get the solar energy money coming in here sometime soon. We've been working on this for a couple of years now, so that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for buildings and grounds? Thanks Jake and Dan. Next item is a president's report. Dr. Mitchell.
Hi. First of all, I'd like to welcome this evening. I believe Dr. Nicole Whitehead is virtual, so if you're out there and you can make yourself visible, wave. And I'd like to welcome Chief Brandon Campbell, who is actually physically in the room, and we'll be waiting on his swearing in ceremony, and I'll share that information, you know, as we move on. But I welcome both of them to JJC and look forward to working with them. I'd also like to just mention and highlight what Ian did. I'd like to thank Deandre Butler, the Student Support Services Team, the Educational Talent Search Team for hosting the Fourth Annual First Generation Celebration. The afternoon, it was amazing. It was filled with entertainment, keynote speaker Katie Wilson, who was fantastic, student and career panels, in addition to information sharing and resources available. So it was quite well attended. You know, Ian talked about, you know, the challenge with the virtual attendance, but they did a phenomenal job, so thank you, Deandre and team. I just wanted to highlight, and I know trustee Broderick will talk about the ACCT conference next month, but you know, some of the focuses, the sessions I attended, I just want to highlight because these are things that we continue to talk about, not only at the federal level, but the state level. So some of the challenges we could talk about with our students is how do we broaden equality? So we talked about the technology needs and the laptop availability and the Wi-Fi, and we've been doing great work, thanks to the help of Kristi Mulvey and the foundation, providing computers and laptops when available and internet. But they're actually talking about at the federal level to see if they can come up with creating a quality broadband within every neighborhood to help with those challenges. So we'll continue to listen for more on that. And they're also looking at changing textbook support to technology support. Again, all this to help our students because what we hear here with our students at JJC is the same message they're hearing from all community colleges across the country. They also want to continue to break down the walls between two and four-year colleges and emphasize to students that four-year, the tuition and debt, is it worth it? Evaluate the job you'd like to obtain, and that's something that we continue to talk with our students about, saving their dollars while, you know, attending their first two years at JJC. They also acknowledged, and we know that there's work to be done with the black and African-American males, the importance of engagement at an earlier age, talking about becoming engaged in grade school and high school to build their confidence, and that they need to see themselves in the classroom in the leadership roles. And Deandre, again, keeps doing great work in that area. Then I attended a session for CEOs and trustees, and again, Ian mentioned this, the significant increase in mental health issues with students and as well as with faculty and staff. It's a significant and really concerning issue that's, that's, you know, nationwide. We continue to look at that. Decreasing enrollment across the country, again, what we see here is not uncommon across the country. We're challenged and we're all working together, again, at a local, state, and federal level to see how we can, we can tackle that. They talked about the increasing needs for the foundation support, and again, we work very closely, the student development team and Kristi Mulvey and her team continue to work very closely together to support our students. They talked about the uncertainty of state and federal funding, and we know that, you know, we're waiting to hear after the election, especially at the state level of what that impact could be for Joliet Junior College. And then the other major concern is food insecurities at all levels. And again, we've turned to Kristi and the foundation, giving our students emergency funds to help support their food insecurities. Some of the federal priorities for the ACCT and AACC, again, continue to strongly support DACA and will continue to advocate for a permanent solution for our Dreamers. There were talk about the international students, those that are actually here can continue to roll in online courses, where they're, you know, the talk is still that new students would have to enroll 100% in-class in person. So they're working to make that change to support our international students. And then legal challenges in operating during the pandemic. We heard from Iris Shepherd, again, the ACCT and AACC Legal Council. He talked about the vaccines expected mid to late spring or early summer. Again, you know, the challenges are that even with the vaccine coming out in December or potentially in December, the length of time that it's going to take to really get through to everyone throughout the nation, challenges of who will take the shot and who will not. It's a two-course, a two-series injection, so there's going to be a lot behind that. So anticipate, you know, what we're looking at through spring semester and into early summer. Again, they talked about, you know, dealing with and managing everyone stressed and having patience and sympathy. And then the medical and safety, again, that turn to which we do, look at our state and local executive orders. We abide by OSHA, EEO, and ADA. Continue to follow best practices, testing for PPE for employees, mandated masks, social distancing, which is now six to 10 feet, so it's even been expanded locally. Limit the number of members in meetings, which is kept at 10. Promote more outdoor activity. Unfortunately, that's the challenge right now with the weather changing, is shifting to outdoors. Contact tracing, our employees, I have to say, a shout out, a kudos to all of our employees that have been involved in contact tracing. It has been an unbelievable task, one that is, I think that they just never anticipated. Cindy Vasquez Barrios, Judy Connolly have been leading that, but you know, that's just, there are so many people involved, you know, I couldn't even tell you all the names. It's just unbelievable work, so thank you. Employment challenges, again, the fear to return, these are things that we're hearing all the time. Health considerations, childcare, ADA accommodations. And then there's the continual talk about, you know, charging less for online classes, and JJC has been proactive with reducing the fees that we're start charging to our students. And again, looking at holding our tuition flat for the next year. So those were just some of the highlights from the ACCT conference, and I'm sure you'll hear from trustee Broderick next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Chairman's report, going to be short and sweet. First off, I'd like to ask everyone to be very, very careful in our COVID times right now. I hope everybody has a nice Thanksgiving holiday. But I would like to say kudos to a few people. Dr. Mitchell, Kelly Roder Tannelli, Mike Hernandez, Kate Severs, Chalino, Joyce Dito, Scott Harvey, Kristi Mulvey, Kate Newberry, Amanda Quinn, Carly Ringo, Sam Sosa Santa, Hank Rocket, Glenn Carpenter, Jeff Fisher, Jeff Rush, and Brett Moats. Because this issue of the connection magazine is the finest one I have ever seen in my whole life. I think we should get Pulitzer Prizes for it. This is fantastic. All the people that worked on it, all the history that's in it. If you didn't get one, get one and read it because it is just phenomenal. It's very good. And thank you to all the people that contributed to it. That's all I have to say. And at this time, I would like to have a motion to go into executive session for 2C2 and 2C11.
So moved.
Second.
Joan Colerole, please.
Morales?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
O'Connell? And Wanderly?
Yes.